It is 5:30, so let us, are we ready?
Yeah.
Are we, okay. Let's call the meeting to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The adoption of the consent agenda is our first item to undertake this evening. We have item A appropriations, and then all the cereal malt beverage licenses, there's 11, under item B. Gentlemen, what would be your pleasure on the consent agenda?
I'm okay with it. That's it.
Yeah, fine. I make a motion, we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're ready now for public hearings. A is a public hearing to consider amending the approved budget. Mike?
Yes. So, I sent that out to you all, and I don't know how many questions you might have. There were two minor changes to that. And the first one was to the liability insurance. What had occurred on that, there were two forms of budget from 2017, and as we put the, put everything together, and as it was loaded into the system, one of the numbers was plugged into the system, and we went on about business, assuming that that was the correct number. However, doing some research, it was actually a little bit less, it was 84,000. So, we are amending that back up to the higher level, which is what we've been operating off of. The second piece of that was on the education sales tax. This one did not need to be amended. What had occurred on this one, there was a payment to the school district from December 2016. It was paid in January of 17, but instead of posting it to 16, it was posted into 17. So, in order to keep our accounting correct and all the, all the year's payments to the school district, we're amending that up to go ahead and pull. There will actually be 13 payments in 17.
Okay. So, actually, what you've done is you've increased the spending authority for those two funds.
That's right.
With this amendment.
That is correct.
Okay. And, actually, that's just to cover expenses.
That's right.
For this, for 2017.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Questions, Gary? I don't have any.
No.
Okay. Entertained a motion then that we approve.
You'll need to close the public hearing.
Or close the public hearing. I'm sorry.
Probably comment maybe.
Is there any?
You got a comment?
Is there any comments from the public? I forgot to ask. Okay, it's hearing none, and we'll close the public hearing then. Now, we can entertain a motion then to approve the amended 2017 budget.
I move to approve the amended 2017 budget as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Item B is a public hearing to consider condemnation of 725 North Penn Avenue as dangerous and unsafe. Mike?
We're wanting to continue that for 30 days. We've had a discussion with the homeowner, been some progress on the house, but we really had a discussion about the garage, state of the garage, and want to continue that for 30 days after we've had a chance to get from him his plan to tear that garage down or do something else with it.
Okay. Is the owner here, by any chance?
He called me about 4:55. I don't think he's planning on being here today.
He was?
I don't, I do not believe that he's planning.
He did not? Okay, was not. Okay. So, you're comfortable with the lay-in ed for 30 days?
Yes.
Yes. Other questions?
No.
Gary?
No.
Okay. Entertained a motion then that we.
Need to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Just adjourn.
Adjourn.
The hearing?
Okay.
Till January 25th?
Till January 25th, yes. We don't, do we need a motion?
I don't believe so, if we're just adjourned.
You have in the past.
I'd make a motion that we adjourn the hearing for 725 North Penn Avenue until January 25th, 2018.
I'll second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Number five, item A for commission action is to consider directing the planning commission to review and recommend text amendments relating to the following.
Staff has been going through some various different things that we think need to be addressed, and some of these we think the planning commission needs to review, so we just like to submit these to the planning commission to see what they come up with, and then bring it back to you guys for consideration.
Kind of the, the one on tiny houses?
Yes, sir.
Is that even addressed in the?
Parts of, parts of the residential code, I believe, talks about minimum square footages of certain rooms and things like that, that would probably apply to that. We have some in the zoning, talks about a certain square foot per family and different things, but a lot of that's lot area coverage. So, it's not really specifically addressed, but we think since that's kind of a thing now, that we need to have a plan, someone that does occur, that, you know, we have a way of addressing it.
I think that's probably a good idea. In my travels around southeast Kansas and Kansas, I've seen a lot of communities that have started, there are some tiny houses that are being built in some of these communities, so I guess probably a good, good one to look at.
And some of them are quite elaborate and expensive. They're not necessarily cheap depending on, I mean, there's, it's, it's really a wide array, so.
Yeah, and I'm curious about the tiny houses term. That just means they're smaller than 1,800.
That one's pretty small. Yeah.
That's tiny.
Does residential code define tiny home?
Well, the residential code that was recently adopted, we looked at that, and there's, there's some things in there about minimum room sizes that could come into play for something like that. But they, those are just in the new codes that were just adopted, so I just think all of that needs to be reviewed, but we were looking at this from the zoning perspective, and then we may need to go back and amend those residential codes that were just adopted if you guys determine you want to allow those, so that, you know, there, there's an exemption for that.
Yeah, because the square footage, you know, from what standards used to be, houses were eight, 900 square feet, and then we grew larger. So, you know, from today's standard, an eight or 900 square feet is considered small, but, you know, when you get to tiny.
Yeah, I think these are smaller than that.
That's why I wonder if it's not defined in the building code, then we need to define it somewhere.
In there as well, right.
Because I think in the building code, usually, like a restroom, CFM for air change, there's nothing required for a house, but, you know, it's, it's pretty open-ended there, but if we're going to look at it, research what that definition is.
Yeah, I was thinking there was a room size, we found the residential code was a 10 by 12. It was somewhere around there, I can't remember exactly, but.
Would be, are they going to be mobile, are they going to be permanent, you know?
Yes.
Different things. So, I think the planning, the planning commission were to look at it, kind of helps us kind of get an idea where, what, different things that we might be looking at.
Because you may even want to do with a PUD.
But you, to be honest, our, our look at this been cursory right now, we haven't really gone in-depth into this, so I think we need to look at other, other local communities, communities statewide, and see what they've adopted, how they've gone about it.
See, there's some models out there, I'm sure.
Yeah, I mean, you could, you know, there, some communities use them as infill housing, others have them as kind of a PUD where you establish a certain specific zoning district for those, they're in a specific location. I mean, there's a lot of different ways to look at it.
We just know that we've had a few inquiries, and we will have more, I'm sure, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't see issues in general with the concept, but then, you know, you've talked about recreational vehicles, and with the description of, of people living in those, and some questions about permanent connections, but then, now you start crossing into a mobile home. So, if a tiny home has wheels, now does it, where do you have the line? I want a mobile home, but I can't have a mobile home because the code doesn't allow it, but I can have a tiny home on wheels.
Well, and maybe you make them.
So, there's a lot of that, I can see.
And maybe you make them take it off the wheels and permanently, put a permanent foundation, or other residential structures, you have to do that. So, just like the mobile homes, or residential design manufactured homes, as they're defined in the code, you have to do certain things depending on what zone it's in. If it's an R1, it has to have an attached garage, and, and you have to do the skirting and the permanent foundation, because those are more modular than what you would call mobile homes.
Yeah, that's where, starting with definitions is a.
Yeah, the definitions are very.
And we do have a minimum width for manufactured homes that couldn't kind of shoehorn a tiny house in that because it wouldn't meet the minimum width of a manufactured home, and so. We, we know there's some things that we need to look at and address as this becomes probably a more prominent issue, so.
Yeah, I can, I can see with cost of construction, lifestyle changes, that there's going to be a, a lot of different systems, even a pre-engineered house.
And there's some communities that's embraced this, and they have people retiring, they have the more fancy ones that they put in a certain area, and it's really kind of a neat little community thing. So, I mean, I, I mean, it could be a positive thing.
It could be.
Yeah, with a planned unit development or.
Yeah, that's what I thought, a PUD.
Co-op where you don't have to maintain your, your lawn, and you have all the snow removal. It could be quite attractive.
Kind of like somebody opening a mobile home part, but it'd be a tiny house park or something like that, you know? I mean, it could be, could be really kind of a neat thing depending on how it was developed.
Candy canes and, yeah.
Yeah. Decorate them at Christmas, have a little candy cane right?
Okay. Other comments? So, entertain a motion then that we direct the planning commission to review and recommend text amendments for those six items. Could there be a motion to that effect?
I make a motion that we direct the planning and zoning commission to review the items referenced on the agenda to consider modifications to our current zoning codes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second. Okay. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And item six, city board minutes, and we're, we're approaching a record here. August 22nd, Independence Historic Preservation Resource Commission, minutes are in there along with the September 26th, 2017, Historic Preservation Resource. Now, we do have some openings coming up on that, Kelly, that.
We do, we have openings on the planning commission inside position, and then we also have some openings on the Historic Preservation Resource Commission. And what the past practice has been is if somebody served over two years, over two full terms, then if we have other applicants that are eligible, then they can appoint those to those positions, but it's completely up to the, the mayor and the commission to agree. And so, we have two that served over two terms on the Historic Resource Commission and one that has not. The planning commission, some of them are eligible for reappointment, but we have one that's moved out of town. So, that one we will, I'll get with you, and, and we'll see how, so far, I don't have any applications, so people will, on the website, that you can apply for those positions.
How many? Two for the planning?
I, I'll need to pull it up. I think there's two or three positions, but some of those are eligible for reappointment, and I think there's three on the historic one, and one, one has not served two full terms, but the other two have. But that, that one's unique because you have to have so many, because the city is a CLG, Certified Local Government, and you have to have so many people that have certain professional statuses to be able to maintain that CLG. So, like an architect, an attorney, and.
Archaeologist.
Histor, yeah, which you have an archaeologist, and a history teacher, something like that. So, I mean, there's specific things in the code, and that's one of the questions on the application. Do you meet any of these criteria, and I have them listed out? So, that one's a little bit, that's why some of them serve several terms, because it is hard to find people that meet those criteria. And that board is very active. I mean, you can see for the minutes. And the second one that wasn't, didn't have as much on that agenda, because they didn't have a quorum, but usually, I mean, they meet monthly, and, and they review like the sign permits downtown, and the building permits downtown, and things, to make sure that they fit the historic guidelines, and, you know, I mean, and I went to a training with them earlier this year, I mean, they're very active.
Okay. So, if we know anybody that it would be any, anyone that would be interested in serving on either the Planning and Zoning Commission or the Historic Preservation Resource Commission, then please have them contact us, fill out an application, and.
Go online.
Go online, and we'll get those filled. Those are important boards for us.
And the league is having a, a training session for planning and zoning in January.
Okay.
Two of them, one in Bonner Springs, and I don't remember where the other one is.
I know where Bonner Springs is, there are several cons, but, um, yeah, okay, that's good. I have them, by the way, under news flashes, so if you go to the homepage, you can go fly for the IHPRC here, there's the application, and PNZ there. So, it's right on the homepage, so if anybody's interested, that's where you find it.
Comes up, so it comes up?
Yes, it's right on the homepage under the news flash.
Okay.
So, since our current mayor is bailing out a city commission, we could appoint him to one of those, right?
Well, you could. It'll be on the next agenda if we get any applications. I have two members on IHPRC that want to be reappointed, that we've gotten.
In the past, we advertised for, what, 30 days or something like that?
Well, it just kind of, what we'll usually do is do a few weeks, and if we get no applications, we'll extend it. So, you guys can determine how you wish to do that.
Okay.
They may all wish to be reappointed, and you may wish to do that, I don't, it's up to you guys.
It's up to the next mayor. Commission comments. Gary?
I have none.
None?
No.
I, I have one, or a couple of questions, actually, from Mike. The, at the last, in our December 5th meeting, when we were talking about city hall, and what we do about it, that, that was December 5th, one of the things that I got to thinking about after the meeting was, is that, in it, thinking about what Craig had said about we would be there a couple of years, I got to thinking about, do we know what the actual cost is going to be for the new $16.3 million city hall? And so, actually called and asked if we had had any, requested any information about what that might be, and so I asked Mike if, if, Mike, can you talk about what those numbers look like?
Just briefly, and these are obviously estimates, and, and they are more honed in on, on what the, from the operating standpoint, what the, the utility cost would be most specifically, because a lot of those things that, whether it's at city hall, or where we're at today, or even in, in the new proposal, those things are going to transfer, you know? You're going to have janitorial costs, you're going to have maintenance agreements on equipment, so those could go up and down some, you know? But one of the big things is we've seen with building D is the, the high cost of the utilities there. So, we went back and we asked Andy if any of that information had been put together, and it hadn't been. He gave us some ideas, and it looked like, from a, a gas and electrical standpoint, because the facilities will be, it'll have the most modern equipment and insulations and everything through that renovation, plus building the new building, be roughly around $105,000.
For the year?
Yeah, annually. And, you know, that could be more, that could be less, that was just his estimates on, based on that type of square footage and the improvements that would be made to 1916 city hall, plus a brand-new facility.
Okay. So, I thought that'd be valuable information. I also thought it'd be valuable to look at what the, what the current costs are at building D. All right? And if we have that $500,000 that's sitting there for Mercy, improvements, which I would think future commission would want to invest in some sort of upgrade, to help sell the building, if that's what, you know, that's what the committee had suggested, and Mike, I know you had looked at some of those numbers.
Yeah, and, and we've been working on that, and we, we've had the RFP, and just got with the, the mechanical guy this last week to go over the RFP with him, to make sure that we understood those numbers, understood everything, that we could anticipate from both phases, understanding more of that. We've had an additional electrical engineer look at this proposal and the ones that we received, and make sure that that was in line, as well as whether or not he felt like, based on those phases, that we could achieve the savings that we thought we could recognize on it. And he's, he's confirmed that. So, now it's just a point of me finishing up the analysis, so I can bring you all good information, so we can make the decision. Right now, it looks like, looking at doing the phase one, which is significantly less dollars from the electrical side, would save us about 25% up there through that phase one of what we're experiencing right now, just on the electrical side. Couple that in with what we're saving on the gas by going with the Green Bush deal that'll start up in January, and we're, we're looking at saving, you know, $60,000 to $70,000 a year right there, off of where we're at right now, which is running a little over $200,000 on the electrical, and about $70,000 on the gas. So, we would be knocking that down to about 205, somewhere in that ballpark neighborhood. I'll have a little more firm numbers when we.
Is that, is that including the lease from St. John's?
No, that, that's just straight cost, so if you take into consideration the lease, sorry about that, you know, that would knock off another $100,000 of it.
But you can't use your lease money to offset 100% utility, because you still got maintenance. You know, if you take the $100,000 and put the utilities, you still got to come up with maintenance of their space.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely.
So, it's misleading, that's how, you know, from day one, we've been told 143 for everything, and it's only going to be 43,000, and, you know, we haven't had a realistic number for day one.
That 205, that, that would just include the utility cost, you know? We do, because there, there's additional cost on top of that, you know? We have insurance, we have, we have janitorial, we have exterminators coming in, we have just regular maintenance, we have maintenance agreements on things, so that's, that's not the, the whole cost of operating building D.
But you're looking at utilities.
Yeah, just looking at the strictly.
So, you're trying to compare apples to apples, that would be almost an apples to apple.
Right. That's correct.
So, that, I mean, that just gives the future commission something to look at as far as, because, you know, as Craig said, I don't, personally, I don't see why we'd wait to do the upgrade for the electrical at the building D, and, and as we talked about in the December 5th meeting, this is that there are other pressing issues that could be prioritized, it's more important than really jumping to that real quick. So, it's just something I happen to think about afterwards, so I thought I'd investigate it, find out what the numbers were. There you go.
Well, and also on the $43,000, Leonard, I think that was the, what your firm was presented on June 30th, correct?
Well, we were presented different.
Yeah.
Initially, was in a November meeting, we were presented utility numbers, and in, in the options, we've been presented so much, numbers that haven't been correct.
Well, after the article in the paper with the graph in there, I went back and looked, and that was from the June 30th meeting, I believe, is that where you got that? And then July 26th is when I realized, when I went through the utilities, that that meter was missing, and I did notify all the commissioners that I thought that that utilities could be off anywhere from 75,000 to 125,000, just roughly looking at it, because the central energy plant meter wasn't included in the data provided by Mercy, that Sean used to put that together. So, I mean, we did notify the commission less than a month later that that number was incorrect till July 26th, and July 28th was the meeting that they decided to move out of the building, and so that information was known at that time. So, I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, just in, you know, all the presentations, we've never had here's 100% accurate, or even close accurate, operating costs.
That's, that's why it's important, that's why we're taking our time on this, because I, I want to make sure that anything that I put out there is, it, it's good, and you all have good information to make decisions.
Have you seen much change with imaging on the electric bill? Is that just one month?
Yeah, we're kind of a blind.
No, because really, they haven't been operating it all that much anyway, so just to have them to up and run, I think they were only averaging about one, one a week. I don't know, that could be misinformation there, but at the same time, that thing is still, it's still operational, and until they completely take it down, we're not going to notice anything there at all. It has to be cooled at the same level, whether they're running it, it, it is still operational.
But when they operate it, that's when the demand increases, when they're running an image.
It, it could there.
So, if it's idle, it's not our, it's constant.
It is constant, yeah.
But when they operate and it's energized, it raises and puts a peak.
Yes.
Then we're billed upon a peak.
Yes.
And that's where we're going to see.
See, that.
Once the peak goes away.
Yeah.
It's going to help us a lot.
Yeah. Those demand charges is what you're talking, you know, those demand charges are.
And those are what's really been killing us through this, and, and when those one numbers were put together, that's when 40% of the building was being demolished, and it, it was really tough, I think, to estimate, estimate that, plus you didn't have all the data, and didn't realize you didn't have all the meters. So, I mean, it was not an intentional thing, to intentionally mislead anyone, that's, that was not the case.
Yeah, well, you know, we had a mechanical engineer looking at it too, and it's disappointing that you pay a professional in that category, and, and then he comes back with a major, oh, yeah, by the way.
Yeah, and I rewatched that, June 30th one, and Sean even talked about, he had checked the numbers with his MEP, and they didn't catch it either, so it, it was not an intentional thing, it was just a, you know, like I said, they didn't have all the data, 40% of the building was being, you know, taken down, so, I mean, it was really hard for them to make that estimate, but it was an error, and like I said, I caught it. When I was going through the historical West Star data, I pulled from Mercy, I found out that there was that additional meter, and I notified you guys the day I found it, and told you, say, hey, there's a problem here, and I, you know? So, we did tell you guys as soon as we knew, and like I said, that was July 26th, less than a month later, and then July 28th was the meeting when, when the decision was made to, to move staff, so.
We brought it up a couple times, so what is our accurate number then? Because even, you know.
You mean based on what it is now?
No, no, that's going to come up later when we get into it.
But, Mike, you said you were figuring a 25% savings.
Yes.
Weren't, weren't they actually talking about more than that?
Yeah, and, and I, I think when this first came up, I think a number of 66, if you do everything, phase one and phase two, we, we've broken it out now into two different phases, but if it's all done, the first numbers that we heard were 66. We pulled those back to 50%, but because we're only looking at doing phase one right now, which is substantially cheaper than phase two, getting more bang for the buck, that would pull that down to 25%.
So, you're being real conservative.
And, and it could be more, I mean, there again, with these meters that are a part of phase one, where we can, it'll tie into our computer system, it'll let us know when we're nearing peak demand, so that we can start phasing things down that are running in the building, and even kicking the generator if necessary to keep us below those demand charges. These meters are going to help, help us manage that, to ensure we stay below that. So, by the time they shut everything down with the imaging center, we could be looking at significantly more than 25% with just the phase one investment, but I'm only looking at 25% right now.
And I do think the first time Steve Makins came here, he thought it could be up to, I'm thinking he said up to 75% on the electrical, which has been, yeah, which, which when they had, Andy had his guy review, he said even if he did it all, he didn't, he thought that was really a little high, so.
I think he, seemed like the report was even pushing 50% was skeptical on. I think he, seemed like the report was even pushing 50% was skeptical on, on that much, but.
So we're being ultra-conservative.
Yeah.
With our estimates, and hopefully it will be more than that, but we don't want to count on that.
But, you know, to, to use a generator to try and cut down on, now you got fuel to add back into it, which is going to be less efficient.
From looking at everything that we know, it, we typically only get in that situation most specifically in the hot months during the summer, where, where the chillers are running, because right now, we, we can't control most of the outside vents, so the chillers are running, we can't pull in that colder air to offset that. So that's, that's going to be part of that phase one that'll help control that as well. But I'm, I'm, I'm going to get an expert in here that can talk much, much better about that than I can.
Yeah, you got, you got a lot of, a lot of issues with a big system, with the chiller sized for 150,000 square feet, and you're trying to do half that area, and you can't idle the chiller down, and you almost got a problem of cooling too quick then. There's a lot of inert problems with size to square footage that you're doing that you just can't overcome.
Yeah, and again, I, a lot of that stuff is over my head, so I'm going to let the expert talk on that.
Well, that's why you hire an expert.
That's right.
Yeah, okay, or another expert.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I don't have any public concerns, so that means that we, I might have missed it, the record. 602. So I'd entertain a motion then that we adjourn.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And happy new year, everybody. 2018.
The next meeting will be on a Monday.
Yep, that's right. The next meeting will be Monday, January 8th.
It's going to be off our normal schedule there.